I would like to call this meeting to order. Today is Thursday, December the 12th, 2013, 7:00 PM. Our invocation tonight will be given by Sherri Castillo. Please stand. Our Heavenly Father, Almighty Creator and Ruler of the world, we thank you for all blessings bestowed upon this council and the community of Florisville. Grant each council member and all leaders the wisdom and courage to make righteous decisions. Guide them in truth so that justice may prevail and promote the well-being of all. We thank you for the freedom to congregate in worship. Thank you for the goodness and grace you have entrusted to us. We ask all this in the name of Jesus Christ and that we teach others to pray the way He taught His disciples. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done. On earth as it is in heaven. Give the children of this world their daily bread. And do not leave us in this campation, but deliver us from evil. For we are yers of the kingdom, and yers of the kingdom give us their life. And do not leave us in this campation, but deliver us from evil. For we are yers of the kingdom, and yers of the kingdom give us their life. And do not leave us in this campation, but deliver us from evil. For we are yers of the kingdom, and yers of the kingdom give us their life. And do not leave us in this campation, but deliver us from evil. For we are yers of the kingdom, and yers of the kingdom give us their life. And do not leave us in this campation, but deliver us from evil. For we are yers of the kingdom, and yers of the kingdom give us their life. And do not leave us in this campation, but deliver us from evil. At this time I would like to introduce any citizens' comments? Mr. Jones?
Madam Mayor, the City Council, as the President of the Florisville Parks Foundation, I've been missed for not being at any of the meetings and no member would please accept my apologies for not being here. Got two items to tell you about. First off, I just found out tonight that the Secretary of State has put us back in business. And I'll get some information on all of that tomorrow and understand there's some documentation that we may not have. For those of you that kept up with me for awhile, we've got a checkbook. What we did is we canceled our old account, started a new account. So all our monies are in there, we're good to go. And now that the Secretary of State says we're back in business, the only thing that is left is we've gotta go back to the IRS, get reinstated with a file of 1C3, then go back to the Controller of Public Accounts, and get the exemption from the franchise tax. And watch out, because we're gonna come out of shooting right in the door of A.I.
Do we have any other citizens' comments?
I would like also to take the time, as you know, it's almost Christmas and I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and give a lottery ticket, $400 billion coming up. And I hope that somebody wins it here. If you don't, well, you know, try to give your present. Alright? There you go. I bought everybody a ticket here. So if somebody, if you didn't win, I'm sorry, but you know what? You never know, you know? Yes. So, good luck. Not at all. Not at all, but you know what? I wish y'all a Merry Christmas and I hope somebody gets in here.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. And Merry Christmas to you too. Okay, anyone else with citizens' comments? Okay, now we're gonna get started with our public hearing. I hereby open the Public Hearing Act 707. At this time, we'll take any citizens' comments. The City of Florisville is holding a public hearing in order to gather citizen input on requesting two variance applications at 1006 Trail Street. The variance is a request for a three-foot setback facing Oak Street and a five-foot side yard setback is shown in the site plan with the variance application. The variance is necessary for a new community building to be placed at lot numbers 16, 17, 18, and 19. The second application is a various request for maneuvering off-street parking space at lot 1006 Trail Street where parking will be facing both Oak and Pecan Streets respectively. At this time, do we have any citizens' comments? And I hereby close the public hearing. Time 7:09. Okay, now we're gonna go on to our presentations. Our first one is going to be by COPSync system. Presentation, Mr. Raymond.
Madam Mayor, Council, we have two representatives from our COPSync here today. I'd like to introduce up to them Kaywin Raymond and Chance Rapp. They're gonna do a presentation today about the COPSync. Got any questions? If you will, just hold off to the end of the presentation and we'll be wanting to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Raymond. Madam Mayor, Council members, thank you for the opportunity to come in and visit with me. What a beautiful invitation and I gotta say, first council that I've ever been to where I received a lottery ticket, so I'm very excited to thank you. My name is Shane Rapp. I'm one of the co-founders of COPSync. I've been in law enforcement for 16 years. One of the most important things that I want to tell you right off the bat is, COPSync is an application that was built for officers by officers. In today's technology world, it's real easy to purchase systems that are built by large IT firms to basically tell law enforcement how they need to, in fact, do their job. We are a group of law enforcement officers who understand law enforcement and therefore built it from the law enforcement officer's perspective. Just like many other good systems that are out there, as you will, COPSync was founded as a result of a tragic incident, unfortunately. I, like I said, I've been in law enforcement for 16 years, not too far from here. In early 2000, we lost an officer in the line of duty in Hayes County. And unfortunately, what we learned from the situation with Trooper Vedder was, he lost his life because of lack of information sharing. We set out on a mission, my business partner and I, to keep that from ever happening again. So COPSync started out as an officer notification system. So what's paramount about our system that you will not find in any other system, first and foremost, is officer safety. We are providing a tool that is going to ensure or help ensure that your officers go home every night when they're shared. We don't take that lightly. We constantly evolve the product to ensure that officers go home safely. The next thing that we take various years is public safety and the public experience as they interact with your local law enforcement. What have we put in place that protects the public? I want to tell you, you may have seen it on the news here in San Antonio. You may have seen it on the national news. It's made CNN. From right up the road in Little New Braunfels, Texas, our company founded what's called COPSync 911. It's the first and only system in America that can be installed in every classroom at a school. And if the teacher has a situation, whether it's an emergency situation such as an active shooter, a weapon on campus, a large fight, they can activate by clicking an icon on their computer and it will summon the five closest officers without even the need to dial 911. Those officers, when they arrive on scene, have a full map of exactly the layout of the campus and manage exactly which room that alert was triggered from. That's critical because if you study and you understand Columbine, Virginia Tech, the Fort Hood massacre, Sandy Hook, what you will find very quickly is law enforcement unfortunately was not prepared. So this system will not only improve public safety at the schools, it's gonna prepare your officers for a better response in the event that something that ever happens, a tragedy like that here in the city of Florisville. The next thing that we do is we're mindful of economics. And when we come and we visit with the City Council or Commissioners Court, which by the way, we've done 450 successful meetings because I have 450 law enforcement agencies that currently use the software just here in the state of Texas. We have to talk economics. So when we talk about economics, yes, the system has a price tag. We wouldn't be in business if it didn't have a price tag. However, the long-term benefits and the savings to your community cannot be understated. Whether it's not having to purchase the penal code, the criminal procedure, the Health and Safety Code for officers on an annual or biannual basis, that's a cost savings. The fact that paperwork is generated electronically, okay? Which can ultimately be pushed electronically to municipal court. Or the fact that we reduce the time that it takes even to do a traffic stop, say, from 16 minutes down to five minutes. That's a better experience for the public, okay? But from an economic standpoint, you're saving money because you're increasing the amount of time that officers have to do their other duties. Across those 400-plus agencies, we have done studies and we can assure that you're gonna see about a 30% increase out of your existing law enforcement agencies. That's huge. That's a huge savings for this community. Because these officers, rather than being tied down, and unfortunately in our profession, we're constantly being asked to do more, more paperwork, okay? The average driving while intoxicated case takes an officer off the street for four hours. Four hours. In our system, it's done in 41 minutes. That's time given back to the community. That's time that they're not in a station typing a report. That's time that they're in a patrol car patrolling the neighborhood. They're out on the streets, they're visible. They're deterring crime just by their mere presence, okay? So the value just cannot be understated. So what we've done is we've put together proposals for council to take note of. The first one, obviously, we have to, and the most expensive piece of this unfortunately, is the equipment. I don't control the pricing of the equipment because I don't manufacture the equipment. We have to purchase that and bring that in from a supplier. So in the first proposal, we have a four-year proposal. What this does is this allows the City of Florisville to come on to COPSync. It covers the software for a four-year period. It covers all of the hardware. You're able to get hardware, as soon as we can get a signed agreement, we place the order. We get the hardware in. It defers the first payment for 12 months. So your first payment as council would not even be considered for 12 months. However, your officers get the equipment today. It does two things. One is it establishes a budget line item number that you guys can predict and you can account for in future budget years. Does it go up? Does it go down? And the law enforcement agency gets the benefit. The next thing that it does is in the event that the City of Florisville would be in a situation where they could not because of the way government works, you can't bind future councils, what it does is it has opt-out language that says basically if the city needed to opt out of the service, then the city still retains that right. So you're not binding and you're not getting into a situation where you have a legal aspect. The other proposal that we've put before you is just a one-year proposal. The one-year proposal does not carry a deferred term unfortunately. And it basically requires the council or the city to take on the burden of purchasing that equipment in year one. Whereas the other proposal satters the equipment out over four years. So I give you the economics and what we tried to do is give two proposals that would give the flexibility for council to see favorable in providing the officers a tool that's gonna make them more efficient, it's gonna make them safer, and then overall it's gonna make the community experience and interaction with law enforcement here in the City of Florisville a better experience. With that being said, I'll open it up. We did bring some of the equipment to give you an idea of what it would mean or what it would entail. For example, just as simple as this. This is a carburetor, reads driver's license, but it's also important because it reads credit cards. If we talk about the warrant project at a labor time with the municipal court, that is a way that the city can get those warrants cleared by all 450 agencies that are out in the state of Texas. The next thing is this little simple GPS receiver. It goes on every patrol vehicle. We at COPSync know where those patrol vehicles are 24/7, okay? Chief will know where his vehicles are. This is important because it's an officer safety issue. I will tell you about a situation in Reagan County. Reagan County unfortunately lost an officer in the line of duty last year. Because of COPSync and because of this little receiver, that is the way that we were able to find where Dustin was. Once we found him, he gave enough time that he was able to tell his mother and his wife his final goodbye before he passed insubstantial to gunshots. So this is a critical component. We need to know where those officers are in order to be safe. Printer. Everything becomes electronic now. This printer here would be handled to print out citations, warnings, criminal trespass warnings, notice of victim to family violence. It can do tow vehicle inventory, all right here on this small little 4-inch printer. This is gonna increase accuracy and again, efficiency. And then ultimately, the laptop that resides in the patrol car. Now, I will tell you, most agencies in the state of Texas have already moved forward into the in-car computing experience in law enforcement. So we look forward to establishing that here in Florisville, working with the police department, giving them training, bringing them up to speed, and moving them into the next level of crime fighting and sharing information into the network. City of Florisville will now have access to 450 other agencies' data and they will have access into the City of Florisville so that in the event that they are investigating multiple crimes, they can work together and collaborate, something that in law enforcement, we don't always do the best at because we don't know the data exists. Other agencies that are here in the area, every agency in Atascosa County, we do have agencies in McMullen County, Carnes County, Live Oak County, Bead County, Bear County, Laverne is on. So we do have a whole, a lot of other agencies that are here in the area that will benefit not only from Florisville being on the network, but Florisville will benefit from being on the network as well. I'll open it up for questions.
Okay, you said you had the, one of the options, was the four-year plan?
Yes, sir.
For the first 12 months, it deferred?
Yes, sir.
Okay, what if the, let's say we had a new council and they decide to opt out second year? Okay, what happened?
What would happen is, is the council would opt out and then ultimately, the company that we work with, which is a company that's been in business here in the state of Texas for 26 years called Government Capital. Government Capital would come, they would take possession of the equipment and then they would dispose of the equipment through other means, maybe selling to another agency or whatever.
But what does it cost to us for the first year if it takes deferred? We still have to come out?
In that particular scenario, I guess the city would not be out in dollars because of the particular situation. We have never faced that. Every agency that we have is a tenured agency. Most agencies that sign up with COPSync do do the four-year option obviously because the hardware is an enormous cost upfront.
Okay, and then on the other option where we purchase warranties?
So everything, whether it's the one-year deal or the four-year deal, every piece of equipment will carry a four-year warranty. So it's gonna give you a full 48 months. This particular laptops, if they break, the company automatically replaces them. They will try and fix it, if they can't, they replace it. We have actually had patrol units that have been damaged and crashed. We had one that's been submerged in water and the company did not even blink an eye. When they sent the computer back, they couldn't fix it, they sent a brand-new computer out. So you're fully protected for the full 48 months. Thank you. Yes, sir.
How many vehicles do we have to put in?
Right now, Councilman Morales, that's gonna be like optional. But what we're trying to shoot for is at least 11 laptops for now, maybe 12.
How much would it cost me?
Okay, so on the, on the four-year option, we're looking at outfitting 11 patrol units, 11 officers with licenses, all of the ancillary hardware, and the annual payment would be $22,705.66. That's full turnkey, covers everything.
Where does money come from?
I have a fund right now that I'm willing to pay for the first year. Thereafter, more than likely, we'll see about getting the rest of the money to a technology fund, to the municipal court.
I'm gonna skip a little bit on the two for your answer in addition. There's, Court Technology has funds that we collect on tickets and we talked about this during the budget process. This is one of the items that was in a special fund, Court Technology. We talked about state forfeiture money. So right now, we would have enough for the first year payment, which would actually be almost in two years. So then we would have the ability to, we have one more payment left on a vehicle through Government Capital, which would be about $15,000. So we will have that payment on that car that's coming off this year. So that would actually help do money to pay as well. So there's about $45,000 available in future. So, you know, yes, you could get out of contract, there'll probably be some penalties with Government Capital. It would be in a loan, it is a lease of the equipment and it becomes ours at the end of it. But so we probably have a little bit of a penalty for that out early. But hopefully with that being two years away, the additional revenue on the ticket rider part, where court doesn't have to enter tickets, that would be another thing we discussed during budget. It allows court to have those tickets input as soon as they are processed through the system, through the internet. It goes into court software. The court clerk doesn't have to, and it's already there, people can come pay within the next day almost. That helps collect funding money, which again, in turn, gives a little more money in Court Technology Fund and so...
And to further on that point, and ma'am, you may need to answer the question. Generally, what we find is there is a Court Technology Fund?
Yes, we do have a Court Technology Fund.
But there's also a municipal security fund for security in municipal court. Do you guys collect that out of the citation piece?
Well, we do have security, but I don't, we could probably get a little bit, but there's not as much money.
And there generally isn't. The one thing that I do want to highlight is, is we will also install this in the municipal court, a version of this. And now if they have someone that comes to pay their fine or wants to contest their ticket, it's a little out of control, maybe a little out of rate because they received their citation, they would actually be able to hit the panic button and summons an officer to come and assist in that situation.
There's, you know, there is future, we've got at least two years.
Now, if we don't go with the, with the full 11, or say we wanted more than the 11, does the contractor renew?
It does have, it does have an auto renewal with a 30-day cancellation clause in the contract. So if you don't want to renew, you can just simply give a 30-day's notice and then the renewal would automatically, at the end of the term, the contract would expire. Otherwise, it would go ahead and auto-renew for the future.
For another four years?
After the four years, it would renew annually, just on a one-year term. The machines, yes, technology will advance, but I would tell you that they are rugged enough and the technology that is coming in these computers now is advanced enough to where you should not find yourself needing to replace hardware in four years. A lot of agencies are getting six, eight. Bear County has some computers that have been in their cars for almost 12 years. So they are a rugged machine, they're designed to be in a patrol car. And so that will benefit you and extend the life so that now what you're doing is you're only paying the software aspect of it in years five, six, and...
Now, now if there's 11 in the, in the contract right now and say we want to purchase another additional 11, now do each one of those carry their own term, a four-year term?
What we would do is, obviously, you guys are probably gonna experience a significant growth here in the, in the future, a lot of agencies are. What you would do is you would contact COPSync and we would probably pro-rate those 11 additional. We would pro-rate those to bring the contracts into sequence so that in the following year, you would just pay for 22 licenses. Unless council wanted to run this two separate contract so that you could do a finance for your term on those hardware aspects.
What would be, just to, on that same note, for one car, say right, there is talk that we may be needing these in our fleet next budget year. What would just for one vehicle, because what would typically, when I've been working on vehicles, the entire cost of vehicles, supply bars, everything you would do. So if we went with this program, we got an additional car, we would add this, and let me just be one.
All our figure you're looking at, about $53,000, $5,400. The good news is, we also contract with the largest providers of police cars here in the state. So for example, if you are going to work with Government Capital in the future purchase, you would place your order with, say, Caldwell Country or Cap Fleet or Defender Supply, Philpott. And when you place that order, you will tell them that you are a COPSync agency and the price of the vehicle...
Do you guys collect that out of the citation piece?
Well, we do have security, but I, I don't, we could probably get a little bit, but there's not as much money.
Okay, and there generally isn't. The one thing that I do want to highlight is, is we will also install this, uh, in the municipal court, a version of this, and now, if they have someone that comes to pay their fine, or wants to contest their ticket, it's a little out of control, maybe a little high rate, because they received their citation, they would actually be able to hit the panic button and summons an officer to come and assist in that situation.
There's, you know, there is future, we've, we've got at least two years.
Now, if we don't go with the, with the full eleven, or say we wanted more than the eleven, does, uh, the contractor renew?
Uh, it does have, it does have an auto renewal with a thirty-day cancellation clause in the contract, so if you don't want to renew, you can just simply give a thirty-day notice, and then the, the renewal would automatically, at the end of the term, uh, the contract would expire, otherwise it would go ahead and auto-renew for the future.
For example, additional years?
It would, a- a- after the four years, it would renew annually, just on a one-year term. The, these machines, yes, technology will advance, but I would tell you that they are rugged enough, and the technology that is coming in these computers now is advanced enough to where you should not find yourself needing to replace hardware in four years. A lot of agencies are getting six, eight, Bear County has some computers that have been in their cars for almost twelve years, so they are a rugged machine, they're designed to be a patrol car, and so that will benefit you and, and extend the life, so that now what you're doing is you're only paying the software aspect of it in years five, six, and a half.
Now, now, if there's eleven in the, in the contract right now, and say we want to purchase another additional eleven, now, do those, each one of those carry their own term, a four-year term?
What we would do is, uh, obviously, you guys are probably going to experience a significant growth, uh, here in the, in the future, a lot of agencies are. What you would do is you would contact COPSync, and we would probably prorate those eleven additional, we would prorate those to bring the contracts into sequence, so that in the following year, you would just pay for twenty-two licenses. Unless council wanted to run this two separate contracts, so that you could do a finance for your term on those hardware aspects.
And what would be, just to, on that same note, for one car, say right, we, there is talk that we may be needing these in our place next budget year, what would just for one vehicle, because what would be typically when I've been working on the vehicle, you, the entire cost of vehicle, because of like ours, everything you would do, so if we went with this program, we got an additional car, we would add this, and what would just be one? I mean, yeah, I kind of would look to...
Ballpark figure, you're looking at about fifty-three, fifty-four hundred dollars. The good news is, we also contract with the largest providers of police cars here in the state, so for example, if you are going to work with Government Capital in the future purchase, you would place your order with, say, Caldwell Country, or Cap Fleet, or Defender Supply, Philpott. And when you place that order, you will tell them that you are a COPSync agency, and the price of the vehicle will include the entire setup already in the month. And it'll be installed from them.
Yeah, council is, is new to that, so...
Sure, sure. And I would tell you, what she's suggesting is, is to weigh a lot, I would say eighty-plus percent of law enforcement is moving to where we no longer purchase a vehicle and then go buy a whole bunch of equipment and then have it installed. We pick up the phone, we tell them what we want, and the vehicle's delivered to us, basically with everything in it, maybe with the exception of radio. And we drop the radio in, and we're ready to go. So it's a lot more efficient, and it's actually a big cost, because of purchasing power is much greater.
Mr. Tucker, do you have a recommendation on, on anything you say about the COPSync?
Yes, I talked to Chief for some time in reference to this project, this program. One of the things that Chief brought to my attention is the heavy use that we use right now for our nine-one-one dispatching in the county. I understand that last year, there was a, a conversation in reference to raising that rate. I believe we pay somewhere around what, Laura, about seven thousand? You pay seven thousand?
Currently, we pay seven thousand. They had submitted a letter to us, Mayor and Council, last year for an increase up to sixty-eight thousand. Of course, this was just a, uh, uh, more or less, uh, not a demanding the, the dollar amount, but more or less a request because of the, uh, the amount of usage we get out of them. And of course, by getting COPSync, that eliminated a lot of the usage, mainly would be for, uh, any in calls, service calls that we'd be getting from them, or nine-one-one calls. The other idea I had, uh, was, uh, possibly sharing a cost with the school district, like you mentioned about the nine-one-one alert system, maybe they could share the cost with us, you know? That's an idea we might want to throw out there as well.
Yes, they're looking at giving me that recommendation based on that cost, the potential cost, because I understand the power and how we have to use them, but that would be something that would offset their costs, and we need to do that. And as you know, the growth over the last three years for Florisville has been substantial, as long as the traffic topic has grown somewhat. So this would be a tool that the police could use in as to decreasing revenue and revenue earlier, as well as to address some of the issues that we have to grow. Um, the chief has been providing to me on Monday morning, the weekend, because usually I have these traffic, and we've learned everything from the agents, of course, to drug trafficking and these, things such as that. And I think the judge is very, very excited about this program, just talked to me in reference to that, and we look forward to something that should fix our communication here. I think she said the number to me is that it increased somewhere around seventy-fold over the last three years. So this would actually give us an opportunity to be able to have a look. Thank you.
Now, you had mentioned that, that GPS and there's, uh, it's tracking anywhere's the, the most, the nearest police officers are. Now, does it track or actually map up to see where's the most visited or most traveled routes, or does it get that extensive?
We do have, so the primary function, uh, what we call auto-vehicle locating, which is the GPS aspect of COPSync, the primary function is, is again, to provide officers' safety, so that in the event that we have to get someone to him. However, it does have administrative sides, and the administrative side basically allows, would allow the chief, we call what you're describing as breadcrumbing, it's kind of like as you're driving down the road, you're pitching out breadcrumbs, to figure out where the vehicle has been in the past. So the chief will have the ability to go back thirty days and see where that particular vehicle is. If it's beyond thirty days, he can request from COPSync, and so long as we have that still, the information's still in our servers, we can pull it, and sometimes, uh, that can extend well beyond a year, if the need arises for an investigation, uh, scenario. Uh, I will give you another example, Kimball County, had received a nine-one-one call, young lady was supposedly in their county, and unfortunately, she was in a suicide. They checked the vehicle, and they checked it in the system, and they saw that they had been out with that particular vehicle, but no one from the agency could remember exactly where they had been without, out with that particular vehicle. So they made a request, because it was beyond the thirty-day period, and we were able to go back and based on when they ran that traffic return, pinpoint exactly where that particular vehicle was, and ultimately recovered the young lady's, um, remains there. So it does have investigative aspects as well as officers' identity.
Now, training, uh, training included into the purchase of the, of the program, like...
It is, and, uh, what we do as far as training goes, is we bring in, we actually have a, a group of officers who have used the software, uh, so they're, they're contracted with, with our company, they've used this, all of them have used the software for at least four years, and they are T close, or T poll now, if they're, they're certified. So they will come in, they will perform a full eight-hour training for all of the officers, the officers will receive continuing education hours towards their state certificate for attending the class, and they will do a top-to-bottom instruction of the entire software to the officers.
Now, if, if there's a, a, a new police officer, do they go to a specific class as well, or is it all, all the, on the job train?
Um, it can be either or. If the officers here feel comfortable in doing OJT through their field training program, we don't have a problem with that. If they want to get the eight hours from a certified instructor, what I would do in that instance is, uh, we're constantly signing agencies up throughout the state, it would, it would cost ninety-nine dollars, and the city would just need to ensure the voucher got to where that class was, and then for ninety-nine dollars, he could sit in and go through the full hour, eight-hour accredited class. So we would leave that up to the pleasure of Chief, the department, obviously, but the council would prefer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Next, we're going to go on to item two B, our financial update, October twenty thirteen, detailed listing, fund balances, and sales tax report. We've got...
We're going to be very clear with that. Good evening, mayors, the council, citizens. This, uh, financial update is for the new year, the thirteen, fourteen budget year that we just went through the process back in September, so this is for the month of October. In your, in your packet, you give in the monthly report and synopsis of activity for the month of October, very, very little activity across all departments, mostly expenses at this point are related to payroll. One of the things is, our staff is still trying to hold expenses down, and October just tends to be a slower month, so, but where we are, it's really nice to see that all of the staff is still caring and thinking about what they're purchasing. Um, for, also, this, with this budget, the FEDC, we began taking over their books October first, for the four B, so they are obviously in your report as well, so just like the four A is in all of your other parts, and you can see there, I can detect this as well. Again, this is the same report, looks just like it has several months, they have one new contract number, it might be a little more information, but I think it's pretty good, it's easy to follow. Uh, but we have for the general fund, uh, right now, again, one month, we have total financing was only a hundred and eighty thousand for the year, excuse your head a lot. Um, again, that's one of the other things, property tax would not start coming in until the month of November, for the city, that's your largest month, so on a cash flow basis, October is, is also an issue when it comes to spending money, we want to try to do the type, because obviously the cash is starting to ease over. So, uh, property tax was actually, came to a hundred and ten thousand, which is twenty-six percent of the budgeted. The, uh, sales tax for the month was a hundred and twelve thousand. You also have in your report, the sales tax report that shows all the funds, street maintenance tax, the four A, the four B, and the general. And you'll see on that report, there's actually, it shows that there's a decrease of seven thousand three hundred and sixty-eight compared to last year, but there's actually, based on the previous year, October received future period payments that belonged to November, so it's really the normal way of that effect. So we really, well, and I've already, are already received November, and we are on target, so, although this month looks like it was less, it's really low. Um, the general, uh, general fund expenditures, again, only two hundred and forty-seven thousand and seventy-eight dollars, that's total for the general fund, for that month, um, so like six point eight two percent of the budget. Again, the only, it's all paid periods, uh, we have two paid periods at this point, so payroll's approximately seven point seven percent of your budget, so we can see, it's really all comprised of salaries. The police department, we just mentioned, it was brought up about the dispatchers, paid yearly, so that was the largest expense, which is a thousand two hundred and, uh, this, in the month of October. Again, very little parks, very little swimming pools are done, uh, expenses, they set them to a small supply. Any questions on the general fund specifically? And then, oh, before I forget, the current budget was supposed to have been here Friday, but due to the weather, the printed books didn't make it here. So hopefully, they're here tomorrow, so you'll have a, the budget in a bound envelope. It's located on the internet as well, and has been since it was adopted. So we have the option. Um, any, any questions on the general fund? I'll go on to the water. The, uh, water and sewer funds, total financing, again, a hundred and forty-six thousand fifty dollars, it's always been in that point. We have eighty thousand and twelve dollars for water, residential commercial revenues, sewer residential commercial revenues, total forty-five thousand nine hundred and six. This is, um, only the sixth month of revenue since y'all increased rates. It was several months back, but it has not been a year yet that you've actually had that rate increase, just to keep people realizing it's not been a year, it feels like it, but it's actually only been six months on your books. We also, just a reminder, we'll be coming back in April on water and sewer rates, per the rate study is a, a tier study, so we'll be bringing back in April on the next tier of increase. The, again, expenditures for the utility fund are only ninety-five thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine. Um, again, all made up of salaries, with the exception of expenses in, um, your disposal sewer, which has always been every month, it's not a bad, a bad one. Debt service payment, or to be debt service fund, we don't make payments in the month of October, so all there is is a collection of taxes of a hundred and nineteen thousand one hundred and eleven. Again, you got, there's a fund in there, so questions? You have one? And then also, we, I included the, the fund balance report that we've been figuring there every month, which just shows un-audited fund balance at the end of September, the ends and the outs, where we're going to spend within an out, and when it shows fund balance as a October date. This was really easy, like I said, and it was very little. It'll get tougher as we go.
Thank you, Laura. Thank you. Now, we're going to go on to item two C, our city manager's update report.
Thank you, mayor, to the council. Um, in your packet, you should see my report in reference to, uh, the activities for the city manager's office. Staffing, I've been working with staffing, and we should, by the end of December, fulfill the positions that we advertised for locally, uh, which would be three utility parks, which would be part-time positions, water department, water operator, uh, wastewater department, parks department laborer, and the streets department equipment operator position. Two of these positions were actually due to retirement, uh, one was due to, uh, due to a move, and was not able to return to work, and replacing a full-time person with three part-time, uh, people to work in the front counter. This will allow us to not have to post for lunch since in twenty-fourteen, allow us with some staffing and prepare for, as Laura mentioned earlier, the increase that's due to do in March, and we need to do some record keeping, as well as assign someone to help with our rubber collection and accounting. So we're hoping that we can take care of that, they've actually, uh, interviewed, uh, the departments interviewed, and we should have them in place by the end of December. They have to do their recruitment, and also, they have to do, uh, their background checks, so we should be done with that very soon. Our land use plan, we've been working with planning and zoning, I think it equals in reference to that land use plan, and that should be coming, uh, for public comment very soon, I believe the date is December eleventh, if that correct? December eighteenth, I'm sorry. December eighteenth, for a public, and a public comment, and they should come to you for review, and hopefully approval based on your working basis changes. Um, annexation, uh, we've been working with identifying the properties that we need to annex, it is addressed in our land use plan, the plan has three key locations, one going north on one eighty-one, one going south, and then, of course, we need to incorporate the community center as well. So we're hoping to have those on annexation to backtrack those, so that we can take care of it, and address those issues that are connected to jail. Um, as a reminder, on the second page, uh, we have some board appointments that we need to do, I believe that, uh, there was a resignation that happened on one of our committees, and so, coming back in January, we're hoping that we can look at, uh, elections and having , uh, the boards appointed for four A, for B, planning and zoning, uh, the audit committee as well, that we can take care of those issues, and I, we will be prepared, I think we did have one, we need to submit a list, recommendations, we'll be bringing that back to you early in January, so that we can get those boards appointed. Our tourism and business bureau funding, which was intended to be, I believe, in October, right before, before Halloween, uh, in reference to funding, and so I've met with, uh, different committees in reference to suggestions, um, one of my suggestions I'm having is that we need to probably establish a board, this board can be made up of several different entities, represented from the city, the four A, the four B, the community, the county, as well as the school district, that will allow us to give direction as to what we need the businesses and tourist bureau to be. Um, as you know, the chamber has one mission, and that is the mission to take care of the chamber members and businesses, but what we want to do is advertise the city of, country, the city of Florisville, we want to be able to market it and do something in reference to that, so we're looking at to take it a different direction, and we'll be coming back to you with probably a proposal in reference to how we want to move forward, to have this board give direction, of course, you always have to come before the city council, but this board to give the direction as to how we want to advertise, what they want to market, and to be able to work with the historical commission, to work with the school districts, those type of things, so we can actually market to one of the cities in Florisville. So that's what we're hoping to do. Code enforcement, actually, I met yesterday with the chief of police in reference to code enforcement, Monica and I have been working very diligently to prepare the documents that we need to do to get ready for this program, and hopefully, we can get this off the ground in twenty-fourteen with a press release in reference to the top ten things we're going to be looking for. This is going to be very important, in reference to the appearance of our community, in reference to the safety of our community, and even the fire department is going to assist us on this new endeavor. So we need to be able to address that. As I mentioned earlier, one of my key things is that we want to make sure that the city of Florisville is compliant moving forward, and we're going to be a leader of that, and so we'll see some things happen in different areas of the city itself, our facilities, but also as we look around for the community. So we're hoping to get that started. Our Christmas decorations, uh, we were able to work very hard, we felt to work to the Christmas decoration at the courthouse, uh, in preparation of the December seventh, and that, uh, the mayor and, uh, councilman, the women's were happy, were lucky enough to drive me in the wonderful parade, I think it was well-attended. Um, we did not get up all our Christmas decorations that we would have liked to have up, but we're going to start it a lot earlier next year, so that we can decorate one eighty-one as well, and we have some volunteers from our community that have said that they would help us get it ready for all of the wonderful light bulbs, to make sure that we're shining and being bright, and I have to commit in the community... And I have to commend the community, the business, I felt, because they were always on hand, and very happy with their budget charts, to help us get all that information and all things up. And I have to say that the chamber, and especially Mr. Rodriguez, did a very good job and worked very hard. And I thought that the community came together around this wonderful festival of light. It was cold, but y'all is cold. It was cold, and we had very well attended, and the mayor had their way very well there.
I do want to add on there, the county was also involved in helping put up these decorations. I don't want to exploit them, they were out there.
Yes, ma'am, I'm going to move back, the county was helpful. It was definitely a community effort in reference to the festival of lights.
Let me ask, on those lights, because I had a concerned citizen, and when I asked you to call, and you did call and all that, but I had a citizen that was a little upset because the lights on one eighty-one were not. And he said, well, how can all those lights be broken? When they took them all down last year, now they're all broken. I said, well, you know, we're going to work at it year to year, we just got here, and we're going to work that program a little bit better next year. But at the same time, I don't know, we have, they have, the city and the county have put up a bunch of lights on the Christmas tree. For, for some reason, it didn't light up, or both, both of the lights didn't work.
No, no, I don't think so.
So, did we do anything to try to fix them, or we just, none of them just go?
Well, we, we tried to get them prepared before they went up. The mayor was very helpful in putting them out, but we, we tried to light up the trend of the buildings downtown, so that's where our focus was, to get them to work. But we didn't start working on those lights until sometime early November.
But there is a lot of lights around the fields that did light up, and the Christmas tree didn't light up either.
The, the Christmas tree, whenever we were to light it up, it had a, it had a short, it kept on tripping the breaker, so I think...
Okay, I had heard that Christmas tree caught two thousand dollars, and what, two thousand dollars of money? Now, I'm true, it might not be true, but for not to light up, you know...
Actually, whenever, whenever it was set up, the lights were working properly, everything was working properly on it.
There wasn't anything we could do to get them lit?
So, I, we have to find out, see if, if there's a way to track them, to track, or to see where, where the short...